I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we go on, last Monday, January 4th was our organizational meeting. And I was once again elected as, once again elected as council chairman, or council president, and have not yet been sworn in, so we'd like to do that part now if we can.
Good dog, watch him. So fine.
Please raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, George Horvath.
Aye, George Horvath.
To hereby swear and affirm, do I hereby swear and affirm, that I will support the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and the laws and ordinances of the City of Aurora. And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the duties of City Council President of the City of Aurora, Portage County, Ohio. Congratulations. All right, thank you very much, council. Thank you for your encouragement going on. All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Barner?
Present.
Ms. Grandillo?
Here.
Mr. Hendricks?
Here.
Mr. Horvath?
Here.
Mr. Cutley?
Here.
Mr. McDougal?
Present.
Mr. Vaca?
Present.
Mr. McDougal?
Here.
All right, is there anything that anyone would like to reconsider from a past meeting?
Can we reconsider what just happened?
Two points. There we go.
Second.
Yes.
I'd just like to say, at our last council meeting, I voted to suspend the rules on the paving, and while I did support the idea of it, I felt like, I feel now that I shouldn't have done that, that it would have behooved us to at least have another meeting to contemplate it and discuss it. So, that being said, that's all. Thank you.
I'm actually changing minutes, but, okay, thank you. All right, we'd like to consider the minutes from December 21st, 2015, that was our special meeting.
Second.
We have a move in second. Any questions, additions, corrections? Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Cutley?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Those meeting minutes are approved. The next ones are for January 4th, which was the organizational meeting. Any additions? No zero motion?
So moved to second.
We have a move in second to adopt. Any questions? And I was, I'm gonna do something. Jeez, I think I'm still at the beach. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Mr. Cutley?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is Officer Dale Riley with his new K-9 Nero. Officer Daley, thank you for, Officer Riley, thank you for everything you've done so far in your training for this dog. If you'd like to say whatever you need to, just walk to the microphone, please.
Thanks for having us, guys. This is K-9 Nero. He'll be two into the month, into January, January 29th is his birthday. He's from the Czech Republic, and as you saw when we came in, he has a lot of energy. He has a lot, a lot of energy, but he's very good with my kids and my wife, and everybody loves him at home. He's a dual-purpose K-9. All that means is trained in patrol function and trained in detection narcotics. He detects up to five narcotics, and the patrol function would be tracking, article search, evidence search, area search, building searches, apprehension criminals, and then my protection. But, as you saw, I mean, he's a lot, a lot of work, a lot of energy. He's a very good dog, very, very good dog. He loves to play, and that's all he wants to do, is just play with his dogs. And that's his reward for anything he does. He just gives his, gives his ball, and all he gets is...
Well, Officer Riley, you put a lot of effort into working for the city. Would you please introduce your wife and your daughters, please?
This is my wife, Christine. This is my oldest, Kerrigan, who's six, and this is my youngest, Claire. And she'll be four, one day before Nero's second birthday.
Thank you, guys, for coming with Dad.
Good to be here.
Oh, yeah, okay. Ms. McDougal?
Thank you. Just a few questions. What's the beeping collar on his net?
This is an electric collar, kind of like an electric fence, like other people have at home. And that's just for, we do a little bit of obedience and stuff with that, but mostly it's for, it has a mild range, so if he gets out of my voice distance when he's chasing somebody, I can correct him and come back to you with a beep, or if I need to, a light shot like an electric fence to get his attention and have him come back. If he gets too far away from me and can't hear me, because he's chasing somebody, then none of that.
And is he still undergoing training, or is he...
No, we're done. We finished mid-November. It was six weeks long, out in Hyrum.
So is he, is he functioning now as a police dog?
Yes, yes. I'm on my journey shift right now, so we're, we're working.
Well, thank you, and welcome Nero.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Kovac?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. I'd like to request that we have legislation for armor for the dog.
I was just thinking of that.
For the protection. I feel that he, he should have as much protection as we could give him. There was an incident in Canton where they just lost their dog, so Chief, if you want to look into that, we should move on that pretty quick, so that's why I want to put it in the legislation tonight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kovac.
Thank you.
Mr. Vaca?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What is the ratio between male and female dogs? Is it mostly male, mostly female?
Mostly male. I only know of one female right now that's led to training by train lift, so everyone I've ran into is one.
So it's you? Do you know why, or is it just...
No idea.
We won't tell Gloria Steinem that. Thank you.
Mr. Hattrich?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, first of all, welcome Officer Riley and Nero. I would just like to, again, thank the mayor and chief, Myron, for re-instituting, re-instituting the K-9 program here in Aurora. It's a very, very important part of our total production umbrella that we have here, and I just want to thank the powers that be. Again, thank you.
All right, Ms. Hattrich, or Ms. Grandillo? On our way.
Ms. Barner. Noun, a barner.
Ms. Hattrich?
Yes, that's okay. I answer to all. Thank you, President. And I just really wanted to second what my council members have said as well. I think it's very exciting that we have a K-9 in our city to protect our community. It's outstanding that you opened your home to this dog. I'm sure that your kids just love it, because I know I'll feed a pet on ourself. And I as well would love to second what Councilman Kovac has stated about protecting our K-9. I just saw that this morning, and was saddened by that news, so hopefully we won't have that issue here. But thank you and welcome, and happy birthday coming up.
Ms. McDougal?
Thank you again. We were in Rotary discussing a lot of the funds for, for the dog. We're in Rotary, but they had mentioned that Big Ben Roethlisberger donated a $5,000 grant to, to the police dog. And I'm, I'm not a Steelers fan, but I'd like to thank him on behalf of the City of Aurora and City Councils.
Ms. Barner?
I just couldn't, could not help but comment, because I am from Pittsburgh, and it was a great game the other night, but I think that was awesome, too. I saw that and heard that, and I think that's fantastic, so it's great.
Yeah, Officer, I wasn't sure if you knew, I was at a couple of football games this year, and the place in Hyrum does all the security for there.
Yes, and we have a contractor for that and Cavs.
And the Cavs games, too. Yeah, a lot of dogs running around.
All jeez.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nero. All right, seeing no public hearings, mayor's report.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of council. First of all, let me mention that we can probably get a figure on armor for Nero and get that in the budget for when you pass it, hopefully the end of this year. I wanted to address water lines. We have discussed periodically the need to replace aging water lines in our city, some of which are 90 years old. We have plans to replace Shawnee and Harmon this year, as you know, but we need long-term plans to fund such replacements. We cannot expect to continue to do so without a dedicated funding source to provide some of the cost. That is the basis of the water rate study proposal for $20,000, which we discussed at the last meeting. And let me just add, the reason that that was asked to be suspended, and that the paving study, the road rating study was asked to be suspended, was because we had the funds in last year's budget and wanted to encumber them while they were appropriated. That's the only reason they were asked to be suspended. But the need to replace aging infrastructure was highlighted this weekend with the water main break on New Hudson Road near 82. That line is currently slated for replacement in 2019, although parts of it are being replaced when we are doing the cross streets like Shawnee and Harmon. So I, again, want to emphasize how important this water, water line replacement plan is for the city. As it was, we had, I don't know, five, six guys perhaps, on overtime Saturday repairing that line. Please mark your calendars for the State of the City luncheon that will be held on Thursday, February 11th, at 11:30 a.m. at the Bertram Inn and Conference Center. As you know, the event's presented by the Aurora Chamber of Commerce. Since our last meeting, I've met with several residents of Sherwood Drive to discuss recommendations made by StanTech regarding stormwater, and we had a meeting with an exterminator and Dr. Jim Tomco to discuss ways to alleviate the woodpecker problem at the deed house. And this really is a problem, so if any of you have some tried and true ideas, please let me know, because we are struggling. I also visited a Shawnee Trail resident with Service Director True regarding water issues and taped my mayor's report at Cable 9. This is our last meeting with Finance Director Bob Paul in attendance, and I would like to thank him again for his many years of service to your city. Thank you.
Okay, questions for the mayor? Mr. Hattrich?
Thank you, Mr. Horvath. Mayor, you've mentioned anything we can do to help you get rid of the woodpeckers? I have had the same problems as I've lived here with the open cedar side of my, of my home. I know one of the problems that causes the woodpeckers to come in, they're little gray things, to come in and get, to try and get the bugs that are living in the wood. I was in St. Louis and visited my friend that has the oldest hardware store in St. Louis County, and they have little strips that you can buy, and you just tack them on the side, it's like little plastic strips, and when the wind blows, that keeps them scarred to get away. It worked for me, and the other thing I'd like to recommend is that you, there's a service here in Aurora, I think it's called Ideal Pest Control. They come out and spray my home for bees and so forth on the outside of the house, and they, they use something the last couple of years that has been really great to keep them away. So, that's my only suggestion I can make.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. President, Mr. Hattrich. We have used the strips, but they've found other places on the house to, and we are using an exterminator, but not that one.
Okay. Ms. McDougal?
Thank you, Mr. President. Back to the woodpeckers. I know my fam, my parents had the same issue, and they put, they put a strip of wood with some big nails on it, and it didn't look very pretty, but it's been very effective in keeping them from, from eating their house, so I could take a picture and send it to you.
Mr. Vaca?
Mayor, one more suggestion, you might not like it, but final sign. They won't be able to eat through that vinyl, they can't.
Mr. Vaca, that's very, very loud, though.
Ms. Barner?
My last comment, I had cedar pillars at our other home and had various ways of using it that I won't illustrate tonight, because I'm sure some people would not have liked the different ways, the methods, but tried and true, and after all else failed, after almost a year of losing our pillars, we finally found a spray, and I can't remember the name, but I will get the name for it, because it's not so high, no one's afraid of sprays, but it was the price of gold. It worked, and being that the deed house is small, and you don't really need to get on a step ladder, you could just spray, and I'm sure the whole bottle would go a long way. It doesn't smell pretty, and I don't think it's environmentally bad, because I have children that would have used it, but I will tell you, knock on, and no pun intended, it worked, and we never had a woodpecker problem again, so I will get the name for you. It was sold at Greasewood. Thank you.
Mr. Wolf?
Thank you, Mr. President, to the mayor. The water rate study, as I understand it, that'll compare our rates to the rest of the state and give us a basis for determining what kind of increase we would need to support the type of 0% interest loans that we're talking about trying to get in order to replace in with these infrastructures.
Mr. President? Mr. Wolf, it would, I don't know how many communities would be surveyed, but we would certainly gather, or have great data gathered from a variety of communities, and not only would it help support our, our good financial rating going forward, but it would also provide a, an ongoing source of revenue to at least underwrite some of the cost of these projects. We have such funding for our sewer operations and other operations in the city. We have nothing that can really fund the kind of cost we're looking at in water line replacement.
Thank you, and I have no non-lethal suggestions for the woodpecker.
Mr. Cutley?
Thank you, Mr. Horvath. On the woodpecker, I think, probably should have invited the bird to the meeting that you had. I noticed that, this morning I noticed there's another new hole on the library side, so I think that's a total of seven holes that the woodpecker has packed into that, but I think it's kind of history-oriented, too, because it's only gone after the new wood, it hasn't touched the 200-year-old wood, so...
We know, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so, and I know it's federally protected, but I'm about ready to sit out there with...
Mr. Kovac?
Mr. Chairman, to either the mayor or Mr. True, the road study, when will that be completed?
Mr. Chairman, to the councilman. Kickoff meeting's tomorrow, so veterans are along for it, the mayor, and the meeting will begin.
Thank you.
We have kickoff meeting tomorrow.
Thanks. Mr. Paul, I just have one question, that's going back to the mayor's report. Many of our water lines are getting old. How does this impact our, our bond rating going forward?
Well, again...
In not keeping substantial balances?
What, what we've just appropriated over the last two years is about $2 million. It doesn't take very long for that to eat through the dollars that we have, even within the water fund itself, as well as our reserve dollars, and we used $1 million of reserve on that already. So what we did in our last fit rating, we emphasized to them that you were considering a maintenance program for our infrastructure, and they were very pleased with that. I would anticipate that if we, we don't, it could, it could impact the, the rating going forward, because failure to that, to pass something of this nature, is going to mean that you're going to have to use real dollars that you currently have to correct the problems that are rising, and you've got 90-year-old water lines there. They're not going to last. So from the financial standpoint, and the maintenance of our AAA bond rating, I think it's important that council seriously consider this.
Yes.
And actually, we, we appropriated $2 million for the project in your 2015 budget, and we have 1.2 million in the proposed 2016 budget, and those are just for two water lines, Shawnee and Harmon.
Thank you. Mr. Vaca?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Mayor, you didn't mention it in the report, but I'm going to ask. In your budget proposal, you said something about Reminderville and California Street. You said, let me get it right, it was recently announced, the California project in Reminderville. Have they gone forward to go for a grant? I know they've done it twice so far and rejected it, and if so, where do they stand? If, number two, if the project does not go forward and they get rejected a third time, where do the funds go that we have put aside for them?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. President, Mr. Vaca, I'll take a first stab at that, and Mr. True may be able to elaborate further, but actually, Reminderville received a call from AMATs late last year telling them they had funding, extra funding, and they wanted to devote it to this California project. And that's when I got a call, John, I got calls from them saying, "Are you still interested in going forward with us, because it looks like we're getting the money?" And so, as far as I know, the funding is coming, and they're doing the rest of the work.
Mr. True? Mr. Chairman, to the councilman. As a matter of fact, I talked to the Reminderville engineer today, and I had to look up some easements and some, and so forth. It is going forward, they're actually going to be out surveying tomorrow, since the weather's been okay. They're actually going to be surveying for the final engineering for the project.
That's good news. Thank you very much. I just talked to one of my residents on that street, and I says, "Well, we're in the middle of, we're going to put so much in if they get their portion." Now, it sounds like they've gotten their portion, so therefore California Street will be a go. Thank you very much for that information.
All right, mayor, that's it. Law director's report. Mr. DePiero?
Mr. President, I have one item to notify council about, that the ABR Management LLC did file an administrative appeal. That's the applicant for the Family Fund Center. They filed an administrative appeal with the Portage County Court of Criminal Pleas on January 4th, 2016. They're appealing City Council's December 7th, 2015 decision, which confirmed the decision of the planning commission to deny the request for conditional zoning certificates. So we're in the process right now. The city has 40 days from the notice of appeal to compile the record and transmit that to the County Police Court, where the procedure will begin. At that point, the appellate's will file their briefs, and the city will file a brief as well, and the case will proceed from there.
Thank you. Any questions for the law director? All right, seeing none, you have a copy of the copy, a copy of the council president's report in front of you. Council's asked to please support a motion to amend tonight's agenda by adding ordinance 2016-001, which is the AKMA Development LLC tax abatement, and ordinance 2016-002, the employees generally. The ordinances were discussed earlier tonight at the committee of the whole meeting. So, we have a move in second to add those to the agenda. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Okay, that motion's carried. Also, we would need a motion to correct the typographical error that was made in the numbering of legislation, reappointing Mr. Derek Seder to membership on the Architectural Board of Review. I ask the council please support a motion to make that correction to Resolution 2015-163 and changing it to Resolution 2015-175.
Second.
We have a move in second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, motion carried. All right, moving on. Anyone in the audience that would like to comment on anything on tonight's agenda, I'll ask you to please come forward. Mr. Mazaro?
Mr. Horvath, members of the council, my name is Jordan Mazaro, 186 Eldridge. On ordinance 2015-155, 56, 57, 58, I know you're going to have a hearing on that on the 25th, but you need to understand, what's happening here is you're taxing the citizens of this community through the back doors, because the contractor who's going to charge for all this, you know, on the final product. And the reason I'm saying that is, let me give you an example. You know, I had windows done in my house, as well as a new roof put on, and I was charged a fee that was charged to the contractor to do the work, okay? Now, I clearly understand that you need to have certified contractors in, that's working in the City of Aurora, okay? But why are you transferring, you know, you're raising some of these fees from $50 to $250, and then from $100 to $500? And all you're doing is taxing the end user, which is the homeowner, the taxpayer of this community. And it's got to stop someplace. Either you need this to operate, or you need this to do other things that you want to do. And I'm having some serious, serious problems, but we'll talk about more of that on the 25th. On annual budget, and I don't know if you're going to pass that tonight or not, but if I recall, I know you have over $2 million in what they call the capital repair, you know, within the, the community, but I remember years ago, and I don't know if Mr. Vaca remembers that, when we had the service, safety committee, we went through the fire stations, we went through the police station, and we said then, many years ago, they needed to upgrade it. And we haven't done that. Now, I know we just put a whole new air conditioning system in the police station, but we should have done a lot more than that, and you're going to spend a lot of money to bring that thing up to a standard that is acceptable, both in the fire and the police department, and that's not anywhere in this appropriations. So I'm having some problems with that, okay? And on 172, thank you, Mr. Paul, again, I read all your documents on the water rates. I should turn around and be opposed to any water increase, okay? I got a new water line years ago. We had one of the older water lines in the city, but we got a new one, so I wouldn't say I'm going to oppose this. I'm not going to oppose it, because I think it's one of the best things you can do, as long as the money you see is used for the money that you said you're going to use it for water lines, understanding you're getting water from not only Portage County, but also from Cleveland. And people have to understand that. Portage County, they have injection wells allowed all through the area, and that water may have to stop, because you're not going to be able to be using it, because if it uproaches itself, you're going to have some serious problems. But all I'm saying is, I think this is a good thing to go out there and see what it is, but it's better to pay in advance, a little bit in advance, than the big chunks later on. Because if you continue as you are right now, the water lines that are up to 90 years old, okay, and then you're going to take it out of the general fund, because you have no funds to do it. If you do it the wise way, what Mr. Paul said, and I think that's the way to go. That's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any comments from council on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll go on to tonight's agenda. First is ordinance 2015-155, which is from Planning Commission. It's an ordinance on third reading. It's an ordinance amending section 157.05, application fee of Aurora's codified ordinances, and we have a public hearing scheduled for...
Move to postpone.
January 25th. We have a move in second, postpone. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Ms. Grandillo?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2015-155 is postponed. Ordinance 2015-156 is from Planning, it is on third reading. It's an ordinance amending section 1101.09, fees, deposits, guarantees of Aurora's codified ordinances, and there's a public hearing set.
Move to postpone.
Second.
We have a move in second, postpone. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Ms. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Barner?
Ms. Duggal?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance 2015-157 is postponed. Ordinance 2015-157 is from Planning, it's on third reading. It's an ordinance amending section 1135.04, zoning fees of Aurora's codified ordinances, and this is a public hearing.
Move to postpone.
Second.
We have a move in second to postpone. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
McDuggal?
Yes.
Ms. Duggal?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance 2015-157 is postponed. Ordinance 2015-158 is on third reading from Planning Commission. It's an ordinance repealing the current section 1329.01 fee schedule and enacting a new section 1329.01 fee schedule, substantially in the form attached here, too, of Aurora's codified ordinances, and there's a public hearing scheduled.
Move to postpone.
Second.
We have a move in second to postpone. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Ms. Duggal?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. Duggal?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2015-158 is adopted, ordinance, or is postponed. Ordinance 2015-170 is from the committee of the whole and is on second reading. It's an ordinance approving and adopting the annual budget and appropriations for calendar year 2016 as submitted by Mayor Ann Warmer Benjamin, and appropriating the monies necessitated by the adoption of that budget. And this will go on to third reading. Ordinance 2015-172 is from the committee of the whole and is on second reading. It's an ordinance accepting the proposal of and authorizing the mayor to enter an internal contract with WSOSCAC Incorporated in the amount of $20,000 to complete a water rate study, taking the necessary funds from the Water Capital Fund Number 71, and declaring emergency in order to evaluate water rates early next year.
Move to suspend.
Second.
We have a move in second to suspend. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm approved.
Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. Duggal?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. McDuggal?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
No.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Garner?
Yes.
The rules are suspended for...
Move for adoption.
Ordinance 20172. We have a move in second to adopt. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. Duggal?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. McDuggal?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
No.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. Kovac?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. Duggal?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. McDuggal?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
No.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. Duggal?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Ms. Duggal?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. Duggal?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. Duggal?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2015-157 is postponed. Ordinance 2015-157 is from Planning, it's on third reading. It's an ordinance amending section 1135.04, zoning fees of Aurora's codified ordinances, and this is a public hearing.
Move to postpone.
Second.
We have a move in second to postpone. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
McDuggal?
Yes.
Ms. Duggal?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. Duggal?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. Duggal?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. Duggal?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2015-158 is adopted, ordinance, or is postponed. Ordinance 2015-170 is from the committee of the whole and is on second reading. It's an ordinance approving and adopting the annual budget and appropriations for calendar year 2016 as submitted by Mayor Ann Warmer Benjamin, and appropriating the monies necessitated by the adoption of that budget. And this will go on to third reading. Ordinance 2015-172 is from the committee of the whole and is on second reading. It's an ordinance accepting the proposal of and authorizing the mayor to enter an internal contract with WSOSCAC Incorporated in the amount of $20,000 to complete a water rate study, taking the necessary funds from the Water Capital Fund Number 71, and declaring emergency in order to evaluate water rates early next year.
Move to suspend.
Second.
We have a move in second to suspend. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm approved.
Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. Duggal?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. Duggal?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
No.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Garner?
Yes.
The rules are suspended for...
Move for adoption.
Ordinance 20172. We have a move in second to adopt. Ms. Hawks, please call the roll.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. Duggal?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. McDuggal?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
No.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Kovac?
Yes.
Ms. McDuggal?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
No.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Duggal?
Yes.
Mr. Cudley?
Yes.
Ms. Duggal?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
No.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Duggal?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
No.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Duggal?
Yes.
Yes.
2015-172 is adopted. Ordinance 2016-001 is from the committee of the whole and is on first reading. It's an ordinance amending ordinance 2015-106 to revise the community reinvestment area agreement with AKMA Acma Development LLC as a result of the increase in the new construction investment from $450,000 to $700,000, and declaring emergency to permit construction to proceed as scheduled. And this will go on to second reading. Ordinance 2016-002 is from the committee of the whole as on first reading. It's an ordinance amending Exhibit A to Aurora Codified Ordnances, Chapter 161, Employees Generally, to reflect changes in the compensation for the individuals listed on the attached schedule and/or to place those newly hired individuals listed on the attached schedule on Exhibit A at the compensation specified for them, approving such compensation and declaring emergency. And this will go on to second reading. All right, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Anyone wishing to comment on anything on, in general, please raise your hand, step forward. Mr. Mazzaro?
Mr. Horvath, members of the council, my name is Jordan Mazzaro, 186 Eldridge. You heard me speak, and the mayor responded to my comments at the last meeting in reference to the water problem within our community. One of the problems I'm running into is that, and I appreciate what she's saying, that will, the reports will come out in the, you know, next few months, wherever it's going